Hammond City Council Public Hearing Agenda, July ninth, twenty twenty four, five thirty P. M. Roll call please.
Councilman Andrews.
Present.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilman Wells. Councilman Leon.
Present.
Councilman DiViterio.
Present.
Public hearing item number one.
In ordinance to adopt the following adjusted mileage rates, and they are hereby levied upon the dollar of assessed valuation of all property subject to an ad valorem taxation within said corporate limits of the city of Hammond for the year two thousand and twenty four for the purpose of raising revenue.
This is a final adoption of an ordinance to approve the adjusted mileage rate set by the parish and to roll forward the maximum authorized levy. It's hyperlinked for you and also in your binder. It is by law that each year we adopt our mileage rate for the year. This is a reassessment year. It happens every four years. There are two ordinances required by the state. Once the ordinance has been approved tonight, we will send all required documentation to the assessor's office who will file with the state legislator auditor office. The first is to approve the rate from the parish at twenty point three one. This is a revenue neutral number. It's adjusted to reflect the increased property values.
Is there anyone here from the public on this item? Anyone from the council? Public hearing item number two.
An ordinance to increase the mileage rates but not in excess of the prior year's maximum rates on all taxable property shown on the official assessment roll for the two thousand and twenty four year, and when collected, the revenue from said taxes shall be used only for the specific purpose for which said taxes have been levied. Said mileage rates are.
The second ordinance is to roll forward to keep the maximum authorized levy at twenty one point zero four. This is the same as last year. We're asking you that the levy and adopt the same rates as last year. There's no increase and already gone before the voters have passed.
Anyone on this particular item?
Only thing I'll note is on the ordinance, Andre, this I think is just a drafting error, on the ordinance for this item, it says shall be for the role, role for the year twenty twenty instead of twenty twenty four on the actual hyperlink document.
Well, we'll be sure that this is reflected for the year twenty twenty four.
Yeah, so it. Okay, it just, this, this one says twenty, the one hyperlink that would be signed by the clerk and, and the mayor says twenty twenty, so it needs to say twenty twenty four.
Anyone else? Hammond City Council, so, excuse me, regular session agenda, July ninth, twenty twenty four, five thirty three P. M. Roll call please.
Councilman Andrews.
Present.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilman Wells. Councilman Leon.
Present.
Councilman DiViterio.
Present.
Our prayer. Eternal Father, we thank you on this evening. We give you the glory, we give you honor, we give you praise, let us do your name. Thank you, Father, that you woke us up this morning and started us on our way. We thank you for your grace and your mercy. We thank you for wisdom, peace, knowledge, and understanding. We thank you for the call and the purpose that you placed on our life. We thank you that our steps have been ordered by you in every area of our life. I ask you to continue to bless our city, state, and our country. Continue to bless our mayor, administration, staff. Continue to bless our fire department and our police department as they continue to cover us and keep us and protect us. Father God, I ask that you continue to bless this council, continue to bless their families, continue to give us most wisdom and knowledge on high in order to move our city forward. We thank you right now, Father, that everything this evening will be done decent, order, pleasing in your sight. Therefore, you will get all glory, all honor, and all praise because it belongs to you. In Jesus' name we pray, amen. By our prayer of allegiance, I ask that all military and parish military, please render the proper salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Could I get an approval of our motion, I want an extremely motion to approve our minutes of June twenty four, twenty twenty four meeting, please?
Second.
Councilman Leon. Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Final adoption of ordinance number one.
Final adoption of an ordinance to adopt the following adjusted mileage rates, and they are hereby levied upon the dollar of assessed value, valuation of all property subject to an ad valorem taxation within said corporate city limits of Hammond, the year two thousand and twenty four, for the purpose of raising revenue.
Once again, I respectfully request approval.
Anyone from the public on this particular ordinance? Pleasure of the council.
Make a motion to approve.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye. Final adoption of ordinance number two.
Final adoption of an ordinance to increase the mileage rates but not in excess of the prior year's maximum rates on all taxable property shown, shown on the official assessment roll for the year two thousand and twenty four, and when collected, the revenue from said taxes shall be used only for the specific purpose for which said taxes have been levied.
Same as above, Mayor?
Ah, yes, sir, I'm sorry.
No problem.
Respect you to approve.
All right, anyone from the public on this, excuse me, on this item? Pleasure of the council?
Second.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye. Next item on the agenda would be an introduction of an ordinance.
Introduction of an ordinance to set water, sewer, and garbage fees for single family properties.
At this time, I'm going to ask to make a motion to table this item. I was informed that we have an upcoming in between now and sometime in November, they would have to do a study. Excuse me, Andre, what, the study on the?
Yeah, it's the water and sewer system, and then they do a review of the revenues and the system itself and the recommendations as to the system as to fees and might be applicable. So, I see like we want to have that available to you if we have to.
And that's, I don't know exactly when the study is going to take place. I'll try to find out more information on that, but I'm asking to table this item to we get that information where we can come back with a little more accurate number. I think this would be something good to look at moving forward. That way, we could be able to provide better services and things for our citizens in our particular districts. So, at this time, I'll make a motion to table this item.
Second.
Councilman Leon. Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Resolution number one.
A resolution to approve Off the Hook Hammond located at three seven zero South Morrison Boulevard, Hammond, Louisiana, seven zero four zero three, to obtain alcohol permit for a restaurant. This owner is Morrow Restaurant Group, LLC, Mayor Pete Panapinto.
This is Mr. Morrow, one of the owners.
Jordan Morrow, yes, sir.
He has met all the requirements, including inspections, so we request that you approve. Below, alcohol content, beer service.
Anyone else from the public on this particular item? Anything you'd like to say, sir?
No, sir, thank you.
All right.
Does your other locations have alcohol or?
Uh, no, sir.
Okay, this would be the first one?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
What do you plan on serving?
Strictly just bottled or canned beer because of offering for dine-in guests.
Your restaurant's great, by the way, enjoy it, and I know you've had a lot of success because we see all the cars in your drive-through all the time, so.
We really appreciate that.
Nice to have you in Hammond.
I appreciate that.
Absolutely. Pleasure of the council.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio.
Aye.
Thank you, Ms. Morrow.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Resolution number two.
A resolution to authorize the mayor to enter into the annual maintenance agreement, including mowing and litter pickup for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty five, between Hammond and the state of Louisiana DOT Office of Engineering.
This is an annual maintenance agreement between the state and DOTD and city of Hammond. It's about fifteen plus miles that we take care of. They give us about nineteen thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars to do so, and this is a rate that's flat across the state with all municipalities and, I assume, parishes.
Anyone from the public have any questions on this particular item? Anyone from the council? Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio.
Aye.
Resolution number three.
A resolution supporting the submission of an application to the Apache Corporation Tree Grant Program for two hundred and forty trees for an annual Louisiana Arbor Day tree giveaway, January seventeenth, two thousand and twenty five, Mayor Pete Panapinto.
This is an application we put in every year. Apache encourages it. We usually get about a hundred, maybe two hundred trees this time that we give away to the public so they can put in their yards and around their houses and what have you.
Sounds good. Anyone from the public on this item? Anyone from the council?
It's a great program, glad they.
Yeah.
Glad we do it and hope we get as many trees as possible.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio.
Aye.
All right, resolution number?
Four.
Four.
A resolution of Hammond City Council confirming the appointment of Monica Perez to the Planning and Zoning Commission, Mayor Pete Panapinto.
Monica apologizes for not being here. Her baby was sick. She's a local architect, been with us since two thousand and twenty one with Gassaway, Gassaway, and Bangston. I respectfully request your approval.
Anyone from the public on this item? She's going to the Planning and Zoning Committee?
Yes, sir, she's on it now.
Okay.
You said she's been on it since two thousand and twenty one, is that right? She does a good job.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman DiViterio.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Resolution number five.
A resolution to approve the appointment of Charles Brocher as director of the administration for the city of Hammond with an annual salary of eighty thousand effective July tenth, two thousand and twenty four.
Good evening.
Oops, there he is. Charles been with us for twelve years, does a great job managing currently about twenty million dollars in grants, projects that are finishing up and projects that are ongoing. I think he'd be a great fit for us, very much like Lacy when we hired her on. She came in and helped us get the next grant rider and helped Charles get acclimated. He was with us for two years and handles all of the permitting. He currently handles permitting with our stormwater, and he'll be handling the permitting for the sewer fall, outfall as well with the state, so I think he'll be a great fit for us. Request your approval.
Charles, any questions?
Charles, you, you've always been very responsive to questions, very thorough, sometimes a little too thorough. No, I'm kidding. You're, you've done a great job. I'm, I think this is a great fit, and I'm happy to see that you're willing to, to help us out.
Thank you. Thank you.
I don't know who I'm above, but. Congratulations. Anyone from the public on this item? Pleasure of the council.
Motion to approve. Second.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio.
Aye.
Congratulations, Charles.
Congratulations, Charles, good luck.
All right, reports, Mayor?
July fourth was a big success, Celia and the family, thank you for helping us out with that as you always do. I appreciate the, the trailer that we put the stage on and the DJ. A lot of folks came out, enjoyed it, no trouble. It was a good event, nothing but praise on that particular event, so thank you for everyone coming out and enjoying themselves with family and friends. And also, we will be having the back-to-school July, oh, what is that? That's. Back-to-school bash with Judge Britton Sledge and myself. We've been putting it on for a while. We, it'll be Friday the twenty sixth at Hammond West Side. I'd like to thank Jason Ola, the principal, for facilitating that at his school. It'll be from nine until noon. Bring the kids. We give away about a thousand-plus bags with school supplies, our donors, Walmart Distribution, First Guaranty Bank, Hammond, Kowanos, Hammond, Ponchatoula, Sunrise Road, Louisiana Federal Credit Union. We'd like to thank them for their donations, making it all possible. And also, there are other agencies that'll be there throughout the gym with tables giving out supplies to the kids, and we appreciate all that they do to help us make that a success.
Thank you. Any other report? Counselor?
Um, I, I, our, the loss of our building official, Pete Lantini, I just wanted to raise that and say what a great loss that is for the city. His family, I knew both of them personally well. Two babies that are okay, and, and his wife chess is okay, but we lost Pete in a car accident over the holiday, which was tragic. And, you know, I know the city will have to carry on, and I'm, I am curious, Mayor, do, are we gonna publish that, advertise that position? Do you have someone acting in that, the building official status?
Nick is working with us from the parish. Diana and I have been working on putting that out, published, putting out to the publications for advertising the position, and that should go out this week.
Okay. I had a few questions, that's why I wanted to raise it, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gonzalez, for bringing it up, it almost slipped my mind. I'd just like to thank the mayor on bringing him back home. That was real nice.
Lot of folks involved, state troopers, municipalities, parishes, and.
That was nice. Any other council reports? If not, I have one. Bishop Sulee would like to address the council.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Bishop Edwin Renee Sulee, four two seven nine eight, Scarlet Circle, Hammond, Louisiana, seven zero four zero. I'm speaking today on behalf of the Hammond Housing Enhancement Committee. And I believe a letter of concern was distributed to all council members, to the mayor, to the attorney, about the Hammond Tangibahola Home Mortgage Authority. We were shocked, the committee, to find out that this entity existed. As you know, this council went through a extensive RFP to create a housing study report with the company Civics, and they did a great job. And they gave us a great report with a roadmap for things to do to improve the quality of housing for all residents here in Hammond. This entity was not mentioned in that report. Don't know why, that this was not given to Civics, because the Housing Enhancement Committee has been struggling the last two months trying to figure out how we could find an entity who could take control of blighted and vacant property legally and put it back into commerce. We met with the Louisiana Housing Corporation, and they told us that such an entity is called a CHODO, Community Housing Development Organization, that you have to be a nonprofit that specifically works only in housing. And so, we were trying to see, do we have such an agency here in Hammond who could do that? And we could not come up with an agency. But according to this audit report, such an agency already exists. And we need this agency, and this agency has one point three million dollars. And let me just read a clip from the audit report. And that audit was done by Harris T. Bourgeois. Harris T. Bourgeois CPAs and Business Advisors. The Hammond Tangibahola Home Mortgage Authority is a public trust created through a trust indenture dated February twentieth, nineteen seventy nine. The authority's primary purpose is to provide funds to enable qualifying low and moderate income persons to purchase or under certain circumstances, improve single unit owner-occupied residence in the parish of Tangibahola, Louisiana. The authority achieves this purpose by purchasing qualified mortgage loans made to such persons by participating mortgage lenders. I'm gonna say it again, we're shocked. Somebody knew about this because somebody wants to take a million dollars out of this fund and build a pavilion on Kate Street, and the purpose of this money is not to build a pavilion. The statutory authority under this document says it's for low-income and moderate persons to help with housing and fixing up housing. And we need this entity, and we need the money that this entity has so we can finish the work that Civics identified in their report. And I don't understand how this became such a secret. Somebody knew about it because they want to take a million dollars out of this fund, it's one point three million dollars. They want to take a million dollars out of this fund to use for a pavilion. That does not fit the statutory authority of this document. Pavilion is nice. I love Kate Street, I love hanging out downtown, but we got residents who need affordable quality housing. We got property that we need to put back into commerce. We need an entity that can do that, and we already have such entity. Now, the entity is not, sixteen persons are supposed to be on this board. I think currently there's only four or five, and it's been that way for decades. Why all sixteen, ten, eleven of those positions have not been filled, I don't know. So, we think the Housing Enhancement Committee, that any use of these funds other than to support the statutory requirement should not happen. That should just not happen. Matter of fact, it might be illegal because this body, when they acted, they didn't have a quorum. And the open meeting law, which was revised September twenty twenty three, and I'm sure you're familiar with the open meeting law, because this entity is a public body and it falls under the rules of the open meetings law, has not had a legal meeting because they didn't have a quorum. So, they could not transact business. They didn't have a quorum because there's ten, eleven vacant positions that are supposed to be appointed to this board. There is a lot to get straight here, to get straight for the citizens of Hammond, to help those folks who want quality, affordable housing and to live in Hammond. We have the entity. It already exists. Now, all we have to do is put people on the board so they're at full operating capacity. Sixteen members, there are about four or five that are still there. Start publicizing the meetings so the public can come to the meetings and provide input. And I know this because the Hammond Housing Enhancement Committee, we have to publicize our meetings so that the public can come to our meetings and voice their opinion on the actions that we are proposing to take or not take. And so, that CEA, it needs to be rescinded.
Well, I didn't know anything about that board until it was brought to us.
Let me just say this before we get into a discussion. The, the open meetings law does require items to be on the agenda if you're going to discuss it. Certainly, we've allowed folks to come forward, and Bishop Sulee has given his statement, but if we're going to have a substantive conversation, we need to, the Hammond Home Mortgage Authority needs to be here, a part of that conversation. You all, you need to see the complete documents. Bishop Sulee, I don't think you've got the complete documents, there are amendments to that original.
We tried to get them, and Tom Hogan has been assisting us, but we welcome, you know, to come back, you know, and look at all of those documents and, and have that conversation. But in the meantime, the, the auditor's report stands on its own.
Well, so the auditor report, it says what it says. I, I'm also to tell you there are amendments to that document.
I understand that.
That, that do reflect the membership, that do reflect purposes, that do reflect the, the group. Now, to have a substantive conversation, to put it on the agenda, have everybody here look at the documents and then have a discussion. But I don't think it's fair to have a discussion of the home mortgage group and criticize them without.
I'm not criticizing them. I, I, I disagree with you. I'm not criticizing them.
Well, so when you say they didn't have a quorum, when you say they're not publishing their meeting, when you say they're violating.
That's not criticism, that's fact. Because when I asked for a copy of the minutes of the meeting, nobody could produce them. So, if they did have a legal meeting that was publicized, then there should be copies of those minutes that we can access and see what took place. There are no copies of those minutes. That's fact. And I understand the amendments that you're talking about, and Tom Hogan unfortunately is out, he's on vacation, he'll be back the eleventh, but we welcome the opportunity to come back and continue this discussion with all of the amendments. And since you are very versed with that, Mr. Attorney, could you go get those amendments for us and make sure we have them?
There's been public requests made to the housing authority. They will provide you the documents that they have and to the city.
Okay. I thank you for your time. I'll take any questions, but I'm just saying, the Housing Enhancement Committee asked me to come and share this information. I'm not sharing it on my own free will. Tony Jackson is our chair. All of the committee members are aware of all of these things. We've had a, a meeting to discuss these things, and we are in agreement with helping the city achieve its goal that it said it was committed to by that Civics Housing Study Report. Elsewise, we might as well go home and stop wasting our time because this is just a hoax. Affordable quality housing in Hammond. Nobody's committed to that. It's just a hoax. It's just make people feel good. I'm not in the business of making people feel good. I'm in the business of getting things done. That's why we're volunteers. We're giving time, wait for my families to help this city. We deserve better.
Thank you for sharing, and I didn't, I didn't take it as any type of, you know, negative about that board. I just took it as some concerns that he had up here, and appreciate you sharing that information with us.
All right. Can I get a motion to adjourn? Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Meeting adjourned.